I would like to call the July 28, 2020, regular school board meeting to order. The first item today is to accept the agenda. Madam Superintendent, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
Revisions. Item C7, approval of minutes at item. Item C8, approval of minutes at item. Item C10, new administrators, update item. Item C29, recommendations for administrative and instructional personnel actions, update item. Item C30, administrative contract reappointments 2020-2021, update item. Item C46, adult general education continuation grant, add attachment. Item C47, Carl D. Perkins Post-Secondary Continuation Grant, add attachment. Item R49, Superintendent of Schools search, add item. That concludes all of our revisions for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. The Chair will now entertain a motion to accept the agenda for July 28, 2020, with the noted revisions. What's the pleasure of the Board? I have a motion by Mr. Wilson and a second by Mrs. Fields. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those alike, like sign. The motion carries unanimously.
Uh, I was actually trying to speak. Sorry. Did I miss, and forgive me if I missed this on the agenda, but I think we're supposed to be renewing the the emergency power or specifically the suspension of
Yes.
of board policies. Is that on the agenda tonight?
Yes, sir. It's under Wes's report. It'll be under Mr. Bridges.
Sorry, okay.
You're welcome. Okay. Next, I would like to ask Board Member Sarah Beth Reynolds to give our invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge, or if you want, you can just sit and we'll stand afterwards. Ms. Reynolds?
Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the children of Polk County. We ask for comfort for our neighbors suffering during this time. We pray for our community as we move forward together. Lord, you remind us in Second Timothy that you have not given us a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and a sound mind. Please give us the wisdom and guidance to make the critical decisions required in the days to come. Help us to remember that you are in control. Thank you for the incredible resources you have given us in our task force, our staff, the local experts, and our community. Help us to remember that health and safety have so many components and that COVID is just one. Give us the discernment to balance the varying needs within our community. Help us to treat each other with respect, grace, and love, serving as role models for our students. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Now if everyone would stand, and I would like to ask Mr. Townsend to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, and everyone, please be seated. Today, we have our special recognitions. Mrs. Byrd, would you lead us through our special recognition today?
Thank you. Marissa Benjamin will share our special recognition of the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club is located in Bartow, and she will be bringing forth our very special recognition. Is Ms. Benjamin there?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, thank you. Good evening, school board members, Madam Chair, and Superintendent Byrd. My name is Marissa Benjamin, Use of Facilities Coordinator with Polk County Public Schools, under the direction of Dan Talbot, Senior Coordinator of Athletics and Use of Facilities. My role with Use of Facilities is to provide excellent customer service to those of the community who has an interest or already uses our facilities. About a year or so ago, the Boys and Girls Club approached Superintendent Byrd about a location to serve the Bartow community. Given Street was a perfect location and had all the amenities that they were looking for. We, as a team, were able to work together and get everything finished, and then began using the facility on March 2. On behalf of the Board of Directors, dedicated staff, grateful families that rely on the Boys and Girls Clubs for support, nutrition, education, and health, we want to thank Superintendent Byrd for her commitment to the youth of Polk County and for her support to allow Given Street to be the host of our eighth unit. Together, we will continue to support the fine work that Superintendent Byrd and her staff performs daily to transform the lives of children and this community.
Thank you, Marissa, and thanks to you and the organization and everyone over there for what they do for children. You know, to give them somewhere after school and to take care of them is always warming to my heart. So, thank you all for taking care of our children and our community, too. And thanks to all of the members of the Boys and Girls Club for what you do and all the teachers and staff that volunteer there and work there to make our students better after school, as well as helping us become a better county and community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes our announcements, our special recognitions for today.
Thank you, Superintendent Byrd. The next item on our agenda is public comments on agenda items. Before we begin, I would like to say once again that we want to hear from each of you. To that end, I would like to respectfully request that comments be considerate and courteous as you address our Board. Mrs. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments via email regarding an item on our agenda today?
Yes, ma'am, we have one.
Okay, if you'd go ahead and read their comment, name, address into the record.
Yes, ma'am. Our comment comes from Mr. Kyle Wyndham. He is principal with Frostproof Middle Senior High School and also serves as the president for the Association of School-Based Administrators. This letter is from that organization, the Association of School-Based Administrators. Dear Polk County School Board, the Association of School-Based Administrators, representing 265 principals, assistant principals, and deans in Polk County Public Schools, would like to voice our support of current Superintendent Jacqueline Byrd. As a result of current dialogue with our members regarding Mrs. Byrd's requested retirement, we would like to share our opinion that her leaving would result in a huge loss for the students and administrators of our district. Through her leadership and vision, Mrs. Byrd has led this district in major achievements. This includes an increase in our high school graduation rate from 69% to an all-time high of 81% for all schools and to 88% for traditional high schools. Additionally, the district has realized an increase in the graduation rates for exceptional education students from 42% to 77%. Under her leadership, we have also seen an increase in our district grade from a C to a B with continuing improvement expected. More importantly, Mrs. Byrd has created a culture and environment that fosters trust among administrators in her leadership team. Under her leadership, the rebranding of the school district promotes who we are, what we stand for, and our mission and vision. During these turbulent times, she has increased school safety through the implementation of the School Guardian Program. We cite all of these accomplishments to remind you that Mrs. Byrd has made a difference in our schools, and we would like for her to remain in this role. However, if it is not possible for our current superintendent to stay, we would like to share with you the characteristics of our next superintendent of Polk County Schools that administrators would like to see. Our members would like to have a supportive, visible, accessible person that brings knowledge of the landscape, challenges, and cultural dynamics of Polk County schools. We need someone that is an excellent communicator, who respects others' opinions through actively listening and has both teacher and school-based administrative experience. We also believe it is important to have a person who constantly supports schools and the community and continues the current mission of Polk County schools. Sincerely, Kyle Wyndham, ASBA President.
Thank you, Mrs. Warbington. Is there anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Board members, the next item on our agenda is to approve four sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the July 14, 2020, school board meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the July 14, 2020, school board meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion? Raise your hands. Mr. Wilson makes the motion and Ms. Fields seconded. So, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands. Aye, and those like sign nay. We have one. So, wait a minute, we have two. I can't see Ms. Fortney's.
I'm a yea.
You're a yea? Okay, Mr. Townsend, you're a?
I'm a, I'm a no. I had heard Ms. Miller's concerns about that. I want to respect them, so.
Okay, so the motion carries five to two. The second set of minutes is for the February, oh, no, the second set of minutes is for the July 14, 2020, work session. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the July 14, 2020, work session minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Please raise your hands. I have a motion by Sarah Beth Reynolds and a second by Billy Townsend. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands and signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. The third set of minutes is for the June 16, 2020, school board meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the June 16, 2020, school board meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Raise your hands, please. Mr. Townsend made a motion. Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Raise your hands. Aye, all those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The fourth set of minutes is for the July 21, 2020, special school board meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the July 21, 2020, special school board meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Raise your hands. Ms. Fields made the motion. Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands. All those opposed, like sign? Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the consent agenda for July 28, 2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the July 28, 2020, consent agenda as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion and Ms. Fields seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. All those opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is our new administrator announcements. Mrs. Byrd, do we have any announcements today?
We do, and we have quite a few that I'm very pleased to recommend. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of John Campbell as Assistant Principal of Stan Bob Mittel. Mr. Campbell has been serving as the dean at Ridge Community High since August 2019. He previously served as Deputy Hillsborough County, as the deputy at the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. He attended the National Lewis University and earned a master's degree of educational leadership. He went on to earn his specialist degree of educational leadership from a glossy university. Congratulations and welcome to Mr. Campbell. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Albert Cummings III as Assistant Principal at Blake Academy. Mr. Cummings has been serving as the testing coordinator of Blake Academy since September of 2016. He previously served as the math teacher at Rochelle School of the Arts. He attended the Florida A&amp;M University and earned a master's degree in MBA. He went on to earn his specialist degree of educational leadership from Nova Southeastern, Nova Southern University. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Melody Davis as Assistant Principal, Frostproof Middle Senior. Ms. Davis has been serving as the assistant principal too at Frostproof Middle Senior since July 15. She previously served as the dean at Frostproof Middle Senior. She attended the Weber College and earned a bachelor's degree in marketing. She went on to earn her master's in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. I am also pleased to recommend the appointment of Britt Gross as principal at Lake Alpha Poly Tech. Ms. Gross has been serving as assistant principal at Lake Alpha Poly Tech Academy since July 2017. She previously served as the director of multiple pathways. She attended the Eastern Michigan University and earned a bachelor's degree in English. She went on to earn her master's of arts in education from University of Phoenix. I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Bradley Hardesty as principal at Eagle Lake Elementary. Mr. Hardesty has been serving as the assistant principal at Eagle Lake Elementary since June 2018. He previously served as a regional-based coach district-wide. He attended the University of Southern Indiana and earned his bachelor's degree in elementary education. He went on to earn his master's degree of educational leadership from St. Leo University. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Robin Hewitt as principal at Bethune Academy. Ms. Hewitt has been serving as the principal at James Elementary School in Hillsborough County since July 2018. She previously served as the principal at La Mona Elementary in Hillsborough County. She attended Tuskegee, she attended Tuskegee University and earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's in education leadership from University of South Florida. I'm also pleased to recommend the appointment of Lacey Yurgren as assistant principal at Spessard Harland Elementary. She has been serving as the reading coach at Hillsborough County Public Schools since August of 2019. She previously served as the assistant head of schools at A+ World Academy in Granite City, Illinois. She attended the Florida Southern College and earned a master's degree in education. She went on to earn her doctorate in educational leadership from Florida Southern College. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Bernadette Lane as the assistant principal at Lakeland Highlands Middle Junior. Ms. Lane has been serving as the curriculum specialist district-wide since August of 2017. She previously served as the assistant principal at Kathleen Middle School. She attended Florida Southern College and earned a bachelor's degree in social science. She went on to earn her master's, her master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. I'm almost there. I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Lindsay Liski as assistant principal at Sykes Elementary. Ms. Liski has been serving as the school-based coach, reading coach, at Carlton Palmer Elementary since July 2019. She previously served as the school-based math coach and teacher at Chain of Lakes Elementary. She attended University of Central Florida and earned a bachelor's degree in the elementary, in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's in educational leadership from American College of Florida. I'm also pleased to recommend the appointment of Heather Lynn as assistant principal of Chain of Lakes Elementary. Ms. Lynn has been serving as regional-based coach for math district-wide since June of 2019. She previously served as the school-based math coach and teacher at Chain of Lakes Elementary. She attended the University of South Florida and earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education and went on to earn her educational leadership from the University of South Florida. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Gail McLeod as the principal of Modela Elementary. Ms. McLeod has been serving as the assistant principal at Modela Elementary since August of 2015. She previously served as the acting assistant principal at Modela Elementary. She attended the Florida State University and earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Suzie Nelson as principal at Chain of Lakes Elementary. Ms. Nelson has been serving as the assistant principal of Chain of Lakes Elementary since October of 2014. She previously served as the school-based coach at Lochman Oaks Elementary. She attended the University of South Florida and earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. I am also pleased to announce and recommend the appointment of Ishmael Potillo as principal of Lake Gibson Middle School. Mr. Potillo has been serving as assistant principal of Arvindale High since July of 2015. He previously served as the dean of students at Arvindale Senior High. He attended Warner Southern College and earned a bachelor's degree of church ministry. He went on to earn his master's in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Catherine Sawyer as Director of School Technology Services. Ms. Sawyer has been serving as the senior manager of schools' technology services district-wide since November of 2015. She previously served as the TRST, School Technology Instruction, district-wide. She attended the University of South Florida and earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from the University of South Florida. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Timothy Sherman as Assistant Principal at Modela Elementary. Mr. Sherman has been serving as a teacher interventionist at Bruce Wagner Elementary since July 2019. He previously served as a teacher and testing coordinator at McLaughlin Middle. He attended Southeastern College and earned a bachelor's degree in middle grades math education. He went on to earn his master's degree of educational leadership from National Lewis University. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Tyrone Wilder as the assistant principal at Arvindale Senior High School. Mr. Wilder has been serving as the assistant principal too at Arvindale Senior High School since July of 2016. He previously served as the dean of Arvindale Senior High. He attended the University of Central Florida and earned a bachelor's degree of exceptional education. He went on to earn his master's degree of educational leadership from American College of Education. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Leon Williams II, Principal, SoCal Elementary. Mr. Williams has been serving as assistant principal at Jewett Middle Academy since January of 2015. He previously served as a teacher, as a teacher, at Lawton Child's Middle Academy. He attended the University of South Florida and earned a bachelor's degree of social studies. He went on to earn his master's degree of educational leadership from the University of South Florida. Okay, I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Rashawn Williams as assistant principal at Kathleen Elementary. Mrs. Williams has been serving as a TRST full release mentor district-wide since August 2016. She previously served as a teacher at Cleveland Court Elementary. She attended the Florida A&amp;M University and earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from American College of Education. This concludes our announcements of new administrators, and I want to congratulate, welcome them all, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Congratulations, everyone.
Wow, what a wonderful list of upcoming leaders throughout our county. So, congratulations to everyone. We're very excited for this coming year. While it's going to be a little bit different, we know that everybody's going to do a terrific job, so thank you. Next, Board members, we come to our regular agenda. Number one, under Administration, General Items, we have item 49, Superintendent of Schools Search. And let me just say that the Board had four presentations a few weeks back from four different search firms, and today, we were able to discuss it in work session. So, I would like to know what is the pleasure of the Board? Mr. Townsend?
I move that we follow the consensus that we developed at the workshop this morning and contract with the Florida School Board Association using the funding from the BP settlement. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is perfect. Do I have a second?
Second, Sarah Fortney.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion to approve the Florida School Boards Association as Polk County Public Schools search firm for a new superintendent of schools. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye, so I can hear you. Okay, any opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Board members. Number two, under Business Services, Budget Revisions, we have item number 50, Resolutions to amend District Budget for 2019-2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolutions to amend district school budget 2019-2020 for the period of May 1, 2020 to May 31, 2020. Do I have a motion and a second? Raise your hands. Mr. Wilson made the motion and Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Item number three, under Facilities and Operations, General Items, Planning and Concurrent, we have item number 51, Demolition of Portable Restrooms. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the demolition of portable restrooms 93-905 and 93-906. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Fields made the motion and Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Fields made the motion and Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Number Four, under Facilities and Operations, General Items, we have Property Management Land, and that is Item Number 52, Blanket Easement for AAA High School. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve a blanket easement for Duke Energy and Associates for AAA High School. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion and Ms. Fields seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item Number 53, TECO Easement for Karen Siegel Portables. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the easement for two new portables at Karen M. Siegel Academy. Do I have a motion and a second? Mr. Townsend made the motion, Ms. Fields seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we come to Item Number 54, TECO Easement for Mulberry High School. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the easement for TECO and its associates at Mulberry High School. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion, Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Next, under Human Resource Services, Annual Items, we have Item Number 55, District Staffing Plan 2020-2021. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Polk County School Board District Staffing Plan for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Fields made a motion, and Ms. Reynolds seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for, hang on. Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. All those opposed, like sign. We have one. The motion carries.
Sarah had her hand up.
I couldn't see you, Sarah.
All right.
Okay, so the motion carries, five to two. Thank you. Okay, now it is time for our public hearing. I would like to recess the school board meeting and open up our public hearing. At this time, I would like to call the public hearing for July 28, 2020 to order. The first item is Item Number 56, 2020-2021 Code of Student Contact. Conduct, the code of student conduct. Mrs. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments regarding Item 56 for the public hearing today?
Yes, ma'am, we have two comments.
All right, if you would please read their comments and their name and address into the record.
Yes, ma'am. Our first comment comes from Stephanie Yocum, President, Polk Education Association. "Good evening. The mask requirement coming before you tonight must be amended to include kindergarten and first grade. We should be instilling in our, in our students a sense of collective responsibility and safety in even our youngest of students. As cases in Polk, Central Florida, and across the state continue to skyrocket, our public school districts are left floundering to bend, bend to the reopen brick and mortar schools or else, threat of a reckless and dangerous state and federal government who have failed us on all levels when it comes to their response to COVID-19. Mask requirements are only one piece of the safety puzzle, and the district, to no fault of anyone on the ground level, is woefully unprepared to provide resources or answer many of the questions that staff and our community have on how our school district will respond to exposure, cleaning, sickened wellrooms, hazard pay and supplements, sick leave policies, Plexiglas dividers in classrooms, as well as main offices, exposure thresholds on when schools would have to close, protocols on when staff and students could return to campus after exposure, meaningful alternative remote assignments for all positions that will keep our employees in every position working, and the list goes on. As a parent of a toddler, I completely empathize with the difficulty of working while simultaneously providing childcare, but is your, it is your paramount duty as the Polk County School Board to ensure safety of our all over parent choice. I personally would rather have a child who is behind on arbitrary benchmarks than a dead one. You, as our school board and superintendent, have a responsibility to your employees and our students to keep us as safe as possible while we are on your campuses and work sites, and we should not be thrown into a potentially deadly experiment that is the mass gatherings of school. You cannot provide a safe working environment in our physical schools right now. We demand you make the decision to pivot to a full, open in Polk's, in Polk's distance learning options under the district reopening plan until there is a positivity trend rate of 5% or less, and there are fully developed written safety protocols for all staff and our community to review that have been agreed to by both PEA and ASME, our employee unions. Public schools over the last 50 years have become the end-all, be-all to our students as social safety nets have been slowly dismantled. Our schools are now expected to be everything to our students and community, even as we are slowly dismantled, even as we are defunded each year." Shall I continue?
Yes, ma'am, if you'd start with your next comment.
Our next comment comes from Sherri Aiken. "The current ad language regarding face covering states that students must wear face covering that covers both the nose and mouth and fits snugly against the sides of a person's face with little or no gaps at all times to ensure their own safety and the safety of other students and staff. Students must wear the face covering at all times when on school grounds or district-provided transportation, unless the student is involved in an approved activity when a face covering would not be appropriate. All face coverings must comply with general dress code and school uniform requirements. I feel the language needs to be amended to include masks may not be made of mesh material and may not contain valves. The CDC states cloth face coverings are recommended as a simple barrier to help prevent respiratory droplets from traveling into the air and onto other people when the person wearing the cloth face covering coughs, sneezes, talks, or raises their voice. This is called source control. This recommendation is based on what we know about the role respiratory droplets play in the spread of the virus that causes COVID-19, paired with emerging evidence from clinical and laboratory studies that shows cloth face coverings reduce the spray of droplets when worn over the nose and mouth. COVID-19 spreads mainly among people who are in close contact with one another within about six feet, so the use of cloth face coverings is particularly important in settings where people are close to each other or where social distancing is difficult to maintain. Mesh masks and masks with valves allow unfiltered air to be released when the wearer exhales and does not prevent the wearer from spreading the virus. However, these masks are not addressed in the language to be added to Section 2.06 Dress Code. Please be proactive in protecting our teachers and students returning to campus, learning, and include in the ad language that masks may not be made of mesh material and may not contain valves." And that completes our public comments on that subject.
Thank you, Mrs. Warbington, and let me go ahead and get a motion, and then we'll have some discussion. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the changes for the student code of conduct for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion and a second? Please raise your hand. Mr. Wilson made the motion, and Mr. Townsend seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, I just want to clarify that, that because this is a public hearing, it is the previous updates to the student code of conduct that we reviewed, I believe, at the June meeting, it may have been the May meeting, that this does not include the mask updates that we heard today, that that would be coming before us at a public meeting that will be noticed for a later date. Is that correct, Wes?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, that public hearing has already been noticed for, for the August school board meeting on the 25th.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Miller?
Just wanted to kind of say the same thing Sarah Beth did. The question is, August 25th is too late. So I would like this at the meeting that we are planning to have, that is not, the date has not been set yet. We're still waiting for Susan and the superintendent and our chair to get together. This should be noticed at that meeting. August 25th is too late.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, we can have a discussion on the 11th, but the Administrative Procedures Act requires there to be 28 days between the date of the notice and the date that the Board acts. So you can certainly have the conversation on the 11th, but the final vote will need to be on the 25th.
Are you announcing our next date as the 11th? Because I had not heard that.
No, I apologize. I made an assumption.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
Okay, I'll look for that date. Thank you.
Since Mr. Bridges just mentioned it, I did get together with Superintendent Dr. Jackson, and we are looking at the 11th, so I will be announcing that later on in my board report.
In that case, I was prescient.
Okay, Mr. Townsend?
So, does that mean that it would not be in place for the start of school on the 24th? I mean, or, or is there some authority that allows that to be in place?
We will have a rule in place on the 25th. The, certainly, as, as people come in, this is the guidance that will be given to them, but the rule will be in effect on the 25th, or the date of the board meeting.
Okay, anybody else have any comments before we vote? Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I wanted to remind that we also, Superintendent Bird said in our work session that our pre-K handbook for our principals would include the recommendation for pre-K. Masks.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Anyone else? All right, there being no further discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hands. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. The next item is Number 57, Second Reading Adoption of Shelley Boone Middle to Lake Marion Middle Zone Adjustment. Ms. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments regarding Items 57 for the public hearing today?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the proposed boundary change, which will move an estimated 300 students from Shelley Boone Middle to Lake Marion Creek Middle to balance enrollment effective August 2020. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Fields made a motion, and Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands.
Aye.
And all those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we come to Item Number 58, Policy Updates. Mrs. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments regarding Item Number 58 for the public hearing today?
No, ma'am, not today.
Thank you. Then the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the final hearing on staff and Neola Recommended Policy Updates, originally reviewed by the Board at the June 16, 2020 work session. Do I have a motion and a second? Mrs. Fields made the motion, Mr. Townsend seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, we have Item Number 59, the 2020-2021 Tentative Budget and Millage Rates. Mrs. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments regarding Item 59 for the public hearing today?
Yes, ma'am. I do have comments. Our first comment comes from Kat Nickel. "Good afternoon, distinguished board members, Superintendent Bird, and concerned citizens. My name is Kat Nickel, and I'm a high school English teacher here in Polk County. Today, I would like to speak on the Board's decisions concerning reopening and tentative budget and budget proposals I've heard from the district in the midst of the pandemic. First, I want to say unequivocally that I truly believe that education is the great equalizer. I dropped out of high school to pay household bills. I feel for parents who are trying to make the decision between leaving their children unattended because they lack other options or sending them to school so they can earn money to keep their family afloat. This is the exact position my parents would have faced some years ago, and the exact position I would have been in only 10 years ago as I was finishing my first degree while trying to work full-time and raise a daughter. Only through hard work and education am I now able to provide regular income for my family, which allowed me to easily pivot to online education as the pandemic began. Now, as cases in Florida surge and death rates soar, I am torn as to what the right choice for reopening might be. The correct answer might have been to sign all students and all staff up for e-school and ask that parents who must send their children face-to-face to fill out a form requesting to do so, then take volunteers from staff to come back face-to-face, perhaps providing hazard pay. This may have eased the stress of many parents and teachers who had a difficult time making a decision which may actually come down to the life or death of their child themselves or a loved one. What I do know to be correct, however, is that the proposed budget specifically plans to set aside funds that would normally be spent in favor of spending CARES Act money that must be spent this year is the absolute wrong thing to do. We are a public entity, nonprofit organization, working from a zero-based budget. The CARES money is meant to provide PPE, sanitation measures, protective barriers, training, extra staffing for cleaning and managing of COVID-related needs. It is not meant to pad the fund balance for a rainy day. Inflated fund balances create the illusion of properly funded public education, and our state needs to know we are not that. You need to spend the money, spend what you normally would to provide resources to students, better pay for all staff and maintenance on the buildings that students and staff are being ordered into, then spend some more. Spend the CARES Act money on protection for those going face-to-face, hazard pay for those whose jobs make social distancing nearly impossible, and on resources to help ease the transition for those choosing e-school. Spend like your lives depends on it, because ours do."
Thank you, Ms. Warbington. Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, board members, there will be four separate motions. Before we start that, it looked like, Mr. Proon, were you trying to put up some information and discuss this with us, or? No? Okay. So, somebody's putting stuff up here.
Yeah.
Yes, I was trying to share something with you. Normally, I talk for a few minutes on getting ready for the, for the motions that you're going to make, but I just wanted to update that on Tuesday, July 22nd, we ran the ads, and, or you voted to approve the ads for July 25th, and that part of the truth in millages that we have to read, that these rates that you will be voting reflect an increase in the rollback rate of 2.7%. in the rollback rate of 2.75%. So now you can go ahead and do all your millage resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Peron. So Board member, as I've said, there are going to be four separate motions. The first one is, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve, A, the Required Local Effort, including Prior Period Funding Adjustment Millage of 3.687 mils; B, the Discretionary Operating Millage of 0.748 mils; C, the Local Capital Improvement, Capital Outlay Millage of 1.5 mils. Do I have a motion and a second?
Madam Chair, you'll need to have three separate motions for this.
Okay. They were all put together for me. Okay. Going back, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Required Local Effort, including Prior Period Funding Adjustment Millage of 3.687. Do I have a motion and a second? Mr. Wilson made the motion, Ms. Fields seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilson? Or Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I just want to, we went into this quite a bit during the work session. This is the Required Local Effort, which has been rolled back again. It's not the full rollback rate. But again, this is how we've gotten behind over the years on funding. The state forced tax rates down, didn't keep track with the demand of the public. Same, you know, it's continuing to happen this year. If they just left the millage rate where it was six, seven years ago, whatever it was, we'd have like $30 million more this year to be in recurring money. But that's just how they roll. So just want to remind folks of that. Our partners.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Anyone else? Ms. Fortney?
I was hoping that Mr. Peron would show the slide that he showed in the work session that reiterates what Mr. Townsend just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Anyone else?
I will try to put that up. Give me one minute.
Can you share the other slide?
Yeah.
Go minimum hour.
Sure, I'll let you get it up.
Okay.
While they're trying to get that to show on our screen, we do have a motion and a second. I'd like to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands.
Aye.
All that opposed, like sign. That motion carries. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Peron, just go ahead and put the screen up. We have a comment from Ms. Fields.
Well, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. We've had this discussion on numerous occasions, and it goes way, way, way back. I mean, years back, that we've had the same issue. So it just didn't happen over the last few years. It has been a constant problem in that it's not recognized that we need to stop having that millage rate rolled back and how much of a value it would be for our students and for our school district if they would even just leave it alone and leave it as it currently is. So that's just an observation. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Go ahead, Mr. Peron.
Am I unmuted? Okay, so this is the, I believe, what Mr. Townsend was talking to.
Yes, yes, Mike, it is.
Okay. So the red line is the tax base here in Polk County, and that has steadily increased back in since 2013. And that's a great thing during, you know, the times that we actually pulled through the recession. But at the same time, you see the blue line, which is our millage rate, which is set by the state, and that keeps going down. So it defeats the purpose of that increase in the tax base. So we lost 6 million and 6.5 on that decrease of 0.151 mils. That costs us 6.5 million. So over the years, you're right, it has been a, it's greater than 30 million if you look at the last 10 years or so. Ms. Fortney, did that answer your question also?
I appreciate you, Mr. Peron, yes. I just think that visual is so important to help people understand, especially our taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, it shows yeah, it shows that Polk County schools did not benefit at all from the economic recovery by design. And I just want to agree completely with Mrs. Fields. If you stretch this out for 20 years, it looks even worse. She's exactly correct, so.
Thank you, Mr. Peron, Mr. Townsend, and Ms. Fortney. Okay, moving along. The next item is the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Discretionary Operating Millage of 0.748 mils. Do I have a motion and a second? You can raise your hands. Mr. Wilson made the motion, Mr. Townsend seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands.
Aye.
And all those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. The next item is, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Local Capital Improvement, Capital Outlay Millage of 1.5 mils. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Fields made the motion, Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2020-2021-01, formally adopting the millage rates for 2020-2021. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion, and Ms. Fields seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2020-2021-02, formally adopting the 2020-2021 Tentative Budget. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion, and Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Next, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Tentative Budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 in the amount of $1,935,365,444. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion, Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. At this time, I would like to close the public hearing and reconvene the School Board meeting. The next item on our agenda is our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Bird, do you have an update for us today?
I do. The next work session and Board meeting will be held on August 25, 2020. The work session will begin at 12:30 PM in the Superintendent's Large Conference Room. And I need to adjust that, it will begin into our auditorium, followed by our Board meeting in the auditorium at 5:00 PM, 1915 South Floor Avenue. Please make sure you follow our website, as that meeting will also be virtual. That concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Next, we have our Attorney's Report, which will be given by Mr. Bridges.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a single item. You'll recall, the School Board adopted Resolution 2019-2020-12, having to do with Superintendent's Authority to act during state of emergency and one of the provisions in that.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I could not hear.
My apologies. Ladies and gentlemen, you will recall, the School Board adopted a Resolution 2019-2020-12, which had to do with Superintendent's Authority to act during state of emergency. One of the provisions in the resolution is that it would be presented to you for extension at each Board member, at each Board meeting. So it is presented to you this evening for extension.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Board members, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve Extension of School Board Resolution 2019-2020-12. What is the pleasure of the Board? Mr. Townsend made the motion. I don't see a second. Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
And all those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Pardon? I can't see him. Sorry. Okay, so we had two that did not, let me say that again. For those that are in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, and those opposed, like sign? So I have two. So the motion carries five to two. Is that correct? Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Bridges. The next item on our agenda is the Auditor's Report, which will be given today by Ms. Matthews.
Yes, good evening. Don't seem to have video. Let's see, maybe I do. Hi.
There you are.
And you can hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So this evening, I'm bringing before you the Internal Audit Plan. The Internal Audit Charter requires School Board approval of an annual audit plan. Using a risk-based approach, the audit plan covers as many areas as possible given the available resources. And as you know, our department includes a staff auditor, a senior auditor, and myself as the director. Audit plans must be flexible to account for unanticipated demands such as unscheduled audits and investigations. Any significant deviation from the approved audit plan will be communicated to the School Board through periodic activity reports. The audit plan was previously provided to you for your review, and this evening, I'm requesting your approval of the 2020-2021 Internal Audit Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Board members, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Internal Audit Services Audit Plan. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion, and Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you.
And next, we come to our Board Members' Reports. And let's begin this evening with Mr. Townsend.
I don't really have a report. I do, there was one loose end from the work session this morning. I mean, I think everybody really needs to watch the work session for the COVID discussion, the reopening discussion. I think one of the things we talked about was extending the period of time or like giving the same time for our staff to solidify their choice that the public and parents have had, like for the next week. Can we agree on that? Do we, is there a, was that agreed to? What's the thought on that? I would like to see them have that additional time.
Madam Superintendent?
I believe Ms. Portius was, she looked at her numbers and went nearly 12,000 of the 14,000 employees. We're going to, she was looking at, since we can go ahead and start making some decisions with schools. But I will leave that discretion of the Board at this time. But I believe we were using that so we can go ahead and start moving forward, planning the numbers that we have. I wish she was confident, because she had 12, pretty close to 12,000 of the 14,000 employees.
Yeah, well, I mean, to be clear, I don't question the the number of people who applied. I want to make sure they know what they're doing. This is a serious decision. There was very little information for anybody to go on. And I think it's important that they be able to change their mind based on what they heard today. If they feel that way, I mean, there may be more people who want to come in and do in person, whatever. This was a very important discussion today, probably the most significant we've had. And I think our employees ought to have the ability to react to it. And so that's what I would like to see this extend, like for the same period of time that we're giving to parents.
I agree, Billy.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Reynolds?
Sorry, I lowered my hand and forgot to unmute. And I just wanted to ask Tadja, are we planning to contact those teachers as we're doing the students that didn't respond? Or are we defaulting anyone to face-to-face?
So the direction that we've provided principals is to contact their staff based on their responses and confirm their responses before we place them into the master schedule and assign them to any specific role or department. So it's going to be a lift on our administrator's part to contact their staff. But again, we wanted them to have that dialogue and engage with their staff to make sure that they are clear with their responsibilities and duties will be with their, given their new assignment.
So even if they did, what I'm hearing is, even if they did already select face-to-face, they'll still be getting a call from their administrators saying, this is where we're putting you. That's okay. So every teacher will be getting a call about their placement?
That is our expectation, yes.
Okay. I think as long as every teacher is getting a call about their expectation to have that, that is the expectation, to have that conversation, I'm comfortable with going ahead and moving forward now. But I do want to make sure that we're reaffirming with each of our teachers as we make those placements, that that's what their selection is.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
My question to Ms. Tadja is, if we proceed as we're having discussion now, and if someone changes their mind, is it going to be pretty much easy to flip that, change it without any significant problem? Are you understanding my question?
I think so, but I think it can be addressed at the school-based side as well. Much like with Mrs. Reynolds' earlier question in terms of them actually confirming what their response is, one. And then, two, talking with their administrator about their response. So at that time, they can change their quote-unquote mind and talk to their administrator about whatever they would prefer their option to be.
Well, to me, as long as they are informed that they can change their mind within a window of time, which would be a week, I would imagine, and then proceed with what you have to get started, because time is of essence, I would think.
That is correct, yes. You're right.
Then I would think that that's what we should do. But make them aware that if they change their mind over the next week, that's when they need to let somebody know.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I believe that Ms. Portius would make those changes for people, but we all know how rollouts go. And if certain principals weren't watching today's meeting, the deadline was the deadline. And I think we should offer it, just as we did to parents, because I'm getting feedback from teachers during our break of things they learned today. getting feedback from teachers during our break of things they learned today, and you're right, some of them will be going back into the classroom, and some of them will change their mind based on what they heard today. So I think we need to offer that for teachers, just like we have parents, and if it's, if it's done district-wide, we won't worry about, we don't have to worry about site-based consistency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. So I do believe we're on the same page. Ms. Fortney?
I totally agree with what Ms. Miller just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I also agree with Ms. Fortney and Ms. Miller, and I think it's important that we make it clear that there are no repercussions whatsoever, whatever folks, the decision they make should be honored, and, and we should, I don't want anyone to feel like they're pressured to do something they don't want to do. This is, as Mr. Townsend said, much too important decision for that, so, um, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Townsend? Can't hear you.
So I'm hearing from Mr. Wilson, Ms. Miller, and Ms. Fortney is that we should extend the ability to make the choice through the portal for some period of time. Is, is that correct?
I don't, I don't care how it's done. I, Ms. Porteous had recommended this solution, which I'm.
Well, here's, well, but, but let me, I mean, I think conversations can be different than, you know, conversations with your supervisor can be different than conversations with your fa, family at home, thinking through a thing. I'm, you know, I'm particularly, uh, that, that, that big group in the green, the, the 30% that are happy with either, makes me a little uneasy, and I think it would be nice if we could give, give people an unencumbered chance based on what they've heard to, to today, which is still very incomplete information, but it's a little better, you know, the chance to make that decision in, in the privacy of their own home, and then have that followed up with, with their administrator that way. I don't, I don't really see, I mean, if we're confident in the numbers, they're not going to change very much in theory, so I mean, I think we can probably go ahead and start planning. I mean, I, I think we probably do both simultaneously, but I, I would like to give folks a chance to state their intent from their homes, uh, you know, based, based, based on what they've heard today.
Yeah, I'm in complete agreement with that, but I think, I think I would prefer to leave that up to HR's how they want to handle that. Do you have some thoughts about that, Ms. Porteous?
Uh, no, I, I am, I think based on the numbers, you know, we did have 11,000 people respond, and so it would not be in the staff portal, Mr. Townsend, it would actually be the intent to return the survey. Again, that is.
That's fine.
Survey, and so I would have to work with the programmers to see if we reopen it or if we just do a new survey. So we'll work it out.
So it's a.
Okay, okay, let me, let me just interject, sitting here with staff. Okay, let me see if we can come up with a compromise. We have already surveyed our staff. Survey has gone out, and we got the results today. What I think I'm hearing, that I hope will satisfy the board, is that HR has said that our school-based administrator teams will reach out to those teachers in their schools and verify that if I put down, I would be happy either way to maybe making a call and saying, okay, we're coming down to it. Lori, I need you in the classroom, you're, I need you to teach this subject. Are you willing to come back and do that? I think that's what we're saying. We, we need to get to a point, because if we reopen the survey after it's already been done, we're losing valuable time, and I think we have to be respectful of the teachers. I get that, I live with one, but at the same time, most have done and returned their intent of what they, what choice they've made. So I think it's just a matter of allowing our district staff and our administrators to do their job and not to micromanage what they do. I think there has to be some trust here, and if we find out that that's not happening, then certainly we can let staff know, but I believe the intent at every school is going to be to put the teachers in the right slot, whether or not they choose elear, campus e-learning or campus brick and mortar. So can we all agree to allow staff to move forward with that rather than trying to say that we need to do a new survey and start this whole process all over again?
I, I do not agree. I, 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 I mean, I think the, must say, and start the whole process over again, I'm, I'm not sure why, why we closed it.
Because plans have to get moving.
Well, there are no plans.
Yes, there are.
There, there, no, no one had any plan to react to. No one had any plan to react, react to. I don't, I don't know what we're afraid of. I mean, if, if, if you're comfortable about the plans we've had, then, then a number should come out exact, exactly the same. Um, you know, I, it's, if we can keep the survey open for parents, I'm not, I'm not sure why we, we, we can't keep it, keep it open for our, for our, for our folks. I mean, look, if, if, if a majority, majority of the board disagrees, that's fine, let's, 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 let's go ahead and do it. You know, I, I think we asked people to make an intent on no, on no information, and I, now that there's a little bit more information, I would like for them to, to be able to confirm that discussion, not to their supervisor, but, but from their home. So that's, that's what I would like, would like to see.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Reynolds?
Sorry, I was going to echo basically what you just said. I think that we absolutely need to be able to get for, able to move forward in creating the master schedules. I know after talking to some APs and principals this week, they're waiting until they know what the intentions are to be able to do that. I do think that if we're expecting the majority to say the same, that, you know, it may be worth having, saying, if you've changed your mind, email your principal, so that they know before they do a placement, but I don't think reopening the survey does anything but delay us in being able to create the new master schedule. So I think we need to let HR go ahead and start moving forward. I don't know, Tadja, I saw you raise your finger at one point, but I don't know if you had something to add. I wanted to make sure that it was recognized if you did have something to say. Thank you.
It's okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I, I, I've worked in schools where I feel totally 110% comfortable speaking with Dr. Linda Ray. I've also worked in schools where I would not even walk into the office or have that conversation, because it would have been a waste of my time, and I'm all about consistency. So I have heard from too many staff members that they want to change their mind now because of what they've heard through bargaining yesterday and the information presented today.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Fields?
Ms. Tadja, is there any way to get some type of information from those who, who might change their mind rather than having to go through the whole process of, of doing another survey?
Well, I mean, to be honest with you, we can reopen the survey, but then, once we reopen it, we're going to have to clean out duplicates and, and clean the data before we then provide it to principals, which will then delay the master schedule being built. So that's going to further make the building principals and building administrators rush and complete their jobs. So it's just going to be a further delay in information. We closed it yesterday because that was the intentional, well, that was the original date for students as well. We thought that that would be a good time to provide all the data, and it would provide school-based administrators time to, again, build their schedules. I think one of you said earlier, you know, we're all going in this, and we don't necessarily, we aren't experts, and we're just trying to do it. Mrs. Cunningham said it, actually, that we aren't necessarily experts, and we're trying to do the best we can with what we have. And so I think we have to be mindful of our school-based administrators' time and effort in trying to make sure that they get what they need to make sure that they have a successful school year. And if that's a first quarter, a virtual, or a first quarter e-learning and maybe playing with the schedule, because it's going to take them some time to do that. And usually, if we, on a, on a, I guess, in a year where we don't have these issues, it takes a couple of weeks normally to build a master schedule, and so with the factor of having the e-learning lay on top of our normal in-house or brick and mortar master schedule, that's going to take some time and ingenuity. Again, they're already kind of starting with that, but I think we just have to be mindful of that. Whenever August 24th rolls around, whatever that date looks like, we need to just be cognizant that it's going to take principals and, and building administrators time to put that together. So to answer Mr. Townsend's question, we were trying to give them as much time as possible while making sure that we heard our teachers' voices. And overall, again, we had a good sampling of the 5,900 teachers. That's a lot compared to the fact that we only have 6,700 teachers. And so I understand that they may want to change, but again, it's about relationships, and so having those conversations, courageous conversations with your staff from both ends regarding how to move forward and what their position or assignment will be for next year. So that's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Miller.
Thank you, and I'm not an HR professional, but if parents are still changing their minds, we're not going to know numbers to go into classrooms. I just feel like the teachers are having to pay for late planning, especially, I've been in the classroom, I understand that, yes, it's about relationship building, but I hear from a lot of teachers who are afraid of, they don't have that relationship, and so they would be afraid to speak up. So if we can create something, I don't, and I don't know if it's as easy as opening the survey is with, with the parents, but you only gave the parents until Sunday, I think, of this next week. It's not that many days, and as of today, we gave them information late. So who was that on? It's not on the teacher. It's now on us, and so I think that they shouldn't have to pay for our late response. We should be able to give them, this is, some of them feel that it's life and death, and we need to take this very seriously. I'm, you know, none of us are in a classroom five days a week, you know, risking COVID-19 like they are, and I think we need to be respectful of that. So I would vote to extend it just like we did the parents.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand why it's a bigger problem to create the master schedule for teachers than it is for kids. I mean, if, if we don't, if, if kids, we, we still have half the kids who haven't responded, so there aren't going to be any master schedules made yet, I'm guessing, right? I mean, uh, you know, I don't, I don't want to give them, well, if we can do master schedules with half the kids who haven't responded, we can probably do speculative asterisk schedules based, based, based on who's responded so far, but also allowing for, for people to change their minds in their, from their own, their own, their own homes. I, I support extending it to, to the same period, period of time. I think that's fair, and, you know, encourage, you know, everybody to, 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 to work intelligently in, in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I just wanted to offer some information. When they build a master schedule, they build that master schedule around the teacher that's going to be in there, and then you can plug the students within there, but you have to start building it. You can't build it without the teacher to attach a course code to. It does take them time, one, because now we're building it not only just for face-to-face, but we're building it now with the e-learning in there, and then the poke, um, virtual has to build it. So you got three components that are going now that's going to delay. It does take time to build a master schedule. I can tell you, the principals were already asking last week, can they help and get some of this information to begin building it, because they know they're going to, they're going to need that so that we can build that schedule for them. When you have half of the students, that's why they, we opened it and we left that one open, because we only had half of our students apply versus we had pretty close to all of our teachers responding. So the delay we would put will have us putting delay on building a master schedule and then floating there for three different programs right now.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Fortney?
Uh, these are, these are all the reasons I never wanted to be a building administrator, just for public record, but I will say this, if we're looking at extending it to, for the kids Sunday, uh, today is Tuesday, they're doing four-day work weeks, that's two days of lost time in my estimation if we're working that schedule, which I know most aren't, but I just wanted to point that out. I still agree with Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. So let me, who is that?
John Hill.
Go ahead, Mr. Hill. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's hard to see everybody.
On behalf of principals, Ms. Byrd and I both have had the privilege of being principals, and I just feel it's important to remind everyone that our principals care very deeply about their staffs as well, and so when it comes to checking in with them to check on their preference, to see if they want to change their mind, our principals are going to be very empathetic and very understanding. They're outstanding leaders, and so I caution us not to always think of the worst-case scenario when we talk about principals, because we've asked them to lead our schools, and they, they're benevolent, they're caring, they love their staffs, and so I'm fully confident that our principals can accomplish that part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Bridges, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let you know we have lost Mr. Wilson. His power has gone out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say, we need to bring this to consensus, because we're going to talk about this probably till midnight. What is a compromise that we can reach? If Sunday night is too late, could we extend this for the teachers, maybe through Workday Thursday? That would give two more days, Wednesday and Thursday, that if someone who has already submitted their intent form could contact whoever they're supposed to contact, whether it's HR or their principal, and be able to say, I've thought about it, and I really would prefer, let's say, in the classroom versus campus e-learning or vice versa? Would that be a compromise? Because we really need to get moving here. We're, we're going to debate this the rest of the night. We need to find a solution that works for both. Would that, would that work on both sides? Mr. Townsend, would that work for you if we extended it through Thursday at midnight?
We've extended what? The, the survey?
Yes, for the teachers. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I thought I misheard. So, so, so they would be able from their own home to say?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah, I can, I, I can live with that, with that period, period, period of time.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, would that work for you and HR?
You know, we'll have principals working on Friday as we have to build schedules. It takes a while, so I just, I'm waiting to see what the pleasure the board is at this point.
I mean, and I don't, I mean, I think there's nothing stopping principals from reaching out themselves to their people like tomorrow. I mean, they, they can, if, 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 if everything's good, then they, they can be moving forward. I just want to give our people the chance in the privacy of their own, own home to make this moment just.
Sure, which they've already made. That's the key, but they've got more information.
They, they didn't have it.
I get it. That's what I'm saying, two days, and let's move on. Ms. Reynolds?
I just wanted to clarify, Ms. Byrd, that principals will be working this Friday. We're returning to normal schedule this week. Is that correct?
No, but if, if we don't have schedules, they're going to have to start pulling. So what I would add is, ask, if you're going to do Thursday, can we do close of the business day so we can run and they can have the information? We can send it to them, but I know many of them are waiting. They cannot do anything else until we get schedules. So.
Well, what is the pleasure then of the board? I'm trying to reach consensus here tonight. What if we extended it through Thursday at 5:00 PM at the close of business day? Can I have a show of hands that would agree to go forward in a compromise? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, would this be announced via, is this going to be waiting for people to watch this video, or are they going to announce this via social media so that teachers have two days?
Oh, I would hope that, Ms. Porteous, and absolutely, I would imagine that we would get something out, correct? Staff, help me. Superintendent?
Sorry, trying to unmute. Yes, we'll get something out just up there with, we put the students, we'll put the, the staff's one right up on there, it's close of business on Thursday, and I wanted to make sure my principals know, I wasn't saying they had to work, but I know how many of them are. They're waiting to get their hands on this so they can start working.
Okay, thank you. So can I have a show of hands, board members, of how many want to do that by consensus? Hands up. One, two, three, four. Ms. Fortney? I can't see you because it's just a picture of you.
My hand is up.
I know, but I can't see it because it's just a photo. I don't. I know, but I can't see it because it's just a photo, I don't see you in live in person. So um, you're good, okay. So I guess we have a consensus, uh, Ms. Fields, go ahead.
I don't understand why we can't do both. I don't understand why we can't let the uh leadership start working on the master schedule and then if anybody changes their mind, uh, then plug them in at that point in time. Uh, and that's what, let me finish please, thank you. Uh, Sarah Beth Reynolds said that. And then I came behind her and said that, and I think even uh Mr. Townsend said that to some extent, so I don't know why we can't do both, but maybe I'm just not getting it. Because I know, I'm hearing from counselors as well that they need to be able to start working on their master schedules, I know that.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. I think that we need to move forward and allow them an opportunity, it's one and a half business days from now, to evaluate the information that's been presented today, which really is, was excellent information regarding safety and protocols. Um, a lot of great information was shared at our work session. So I think if we move forward and give them until Thursday at, at close of business, I think that's a fair compromise and then we're allowing our students, we said, through Sunday, is that correct, Madam Superintendent? Okay, um, that's the pleasure of the board, we, we have reached consensus then. Mr. Townsend?
I, I just, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see any reason why they can't move forward on master schedule, they, they, they may have to make a change or two, as, I just, I just want to make sure we're giving our folks the ability personally, like, 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 in, 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 in their own home, it's fine, we've, 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 we've rehashed this, we're done.
We've rehashed it, we're done, okay, thank you, sir. Um, anybody else? Okay, thank you, let's move on, uh, Ms. Fortney, we're, we're in our board reports, Ms. Fortney?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, I, I just want to recognize because of the weird way we had to end the school year and the weird way we were starting the new school year, our retirees that have given their uh bloods work at their school, some have been at the same schools, I, I do want to give some shout-outs to personal friends and acquaintances, uh, Ms. Davis for being promoted, first off, I had the pleasure of working with her. Uh, and uh, somebody who's retiring is Mr. Kelso, uh, Marilyn Sheffield, uh, I taught uh her child, who's now a teacher, I believe, uh, Nancy Bachman out of Winter Haven, I, I taught her kids and uh, of course Evelyn Rainey is my neighbor. Uh, and then a special shout-out to uh, Ms. Sue from uh Kingsford, she is quite the leader and those are big shoes to fill. And as usual, I'm going to end with pre-K through 12, public schools just do it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney, uh, Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, I want to echo a little bit of what Ms. Fortney said, Ms. Bachman was my college and career specialist in high school and completely changed my life. Um, and she will be sorely missed at Winter Haven, um, I don't think that she has fully given up the range yet, I think she probably will be volunteering as much as they will let her on campus, um, because she certainly was not ready to go. Um, so, but a special thank you to Ms. Bachman for all of her service. The second shout-out I'd like to do is to all of our bus drivers and food and nutrition workers um that have been working to make sure our kids get fed all summer long. Um, and a huge thank you to the district as well for extending our feeding sites for two weeks, when we extended um school reopenings two weeks. Um, I've had the pleasure of working with three of our lovely bus drivers at um one of our sites all summer, um, and they are the salt of the earth and truly love our kids more than we could ever imagine. Um, so a thank you for them for giving up their, their summers to be able to come and work with us um and make sure our kids get fed, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, uh, Ms. Fields. Thank you, Ms. Fields, uh, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, I, I do have some comments I'd like to make and they're related to reopening schools. Um, first of all, it's just an incredibly difficult situation for everybody, we're all, of course, trying to do the best we can with this. I want to thank everyone who sent me emails and called me and texted me, um, you know, I've done everything I can do to, to inform myself, but those emails are very helpful, they're very helpful in informing me as a board member and I, I just want to say thank you so much for, for all the emails that I received. You know, I don't think there is um a COVID, a COVID-19 virus, I think there are many strains of a COVID-19 virus and I don't think that, I don't think we're going to see the end of it anytime soon, but I think we have to find a way to move forward. I talked to a nurse about a week ago uh who worked on a COVID-19 floor and um I asked her how she felt about that, she said, I don't have any choice. Who's going to help the folks who need help? And I asked her if she was comfortable with what they were doing and, and she said, yeah, pretty much, no one, there was no one on their floor who had contracted COVID-19. And I asked her, you know, what do you think are the most important things you can do? And she said, well, first and foremost, it's the mask, that's the single most important thing. And, and obviously the other things that we know, distancing and washing hands and things like that. And we've seen big companies like Walmart and um, in Publix, they're, they're essential organizations, much like our nurses are. And I think we're an essential organization as well, and I think we have to find a way to move forward. It's not easy, it's, it's quite difficult, but I think they've provided a path for us. I think we see all of the folks that go through Walmart every day and, and Publix and, and, you know, it's, it's not without incident, I mean, there are some challenges and there are some setbacks, but, but I think they've kind of forged a path for us and, and I think that's something for us to work with. Um, I see you're basically four groups of employees that, that need to be considered. The first group, of course, is our administrators who have very little, if any, contact with students and, and as I said, I think that, that we've learned from other organizations about how to deal with that, social distancing, washing our hands, wearing masks. Um, again, it's not, it's not 100%, but it, it seems to, it seems to be working. And I think, you know, that's the expect, would be the expectation for those individuals. We have the other folks who, who have contact with students, but it's not at the level of our teachers. Um, and, and again, I think the same set of rules and, and, and policies and procedures would apply with them, or apply to them, face masks, all the things we know to do, distancing, washing our hands and so forth. And, and those are the bus drivers and, and the school-based administrators and so forth. And then, of course, we have the teachers. And I think the, for the teachers, we have, we simply give them an option and we've done that. And I think that's a choice that, that uh we uh, we owe to them to make. I, I've received probably as many responses from teachers who want to go back in the classroom as I have from folks who don't, so I, I think we, we need to honor that and I think it's admirable, though I think, you know, and that's not to suggest that those folks who, who, uh, who choose not to go back, uh, um, you know, it's not a slight towards them in any way, shape or form, I fully, completely understand that and I honor that decision fully as well. And then we have the students and, and we talk a lot about the learning gap for our students and certainly that's an important issue. We talk about, you know, we've all read a lot about their social well-being and that's an issue for them, but there's another issue here and that is, many of our parents are working parents and they have to go to work, they have to earn a living. And, and so they have to have something, they have to have somewhere for their children to go. It's just an economic reality, reality, it's a fact of life and, and their choices are, they can, they can send them to a daycare center, which may or may not be applying the same safety procedures that we are, they can send them to a private school, which may or may not be applying the same safety procedures. What I'm hearing from those parents is this, they want their students, they want their children with us because they trust us. They believe that we can apply, that we can keep their children safe and apply safety procedures and that's the best possible environment for their children to be in. Now, they are, of course, concerned about the learning gap and they're concerned about the social well-being of their children, but, but that's a consideration as well. So um, it's a tough choice, it's a tough decision, but I think we have to find, I think we have to move forward and, and we're going to do that the best we can. But I think we've, 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 you know, there's some other organizations that have kind of led us down that path and they've set that pathway for us and, and I think we, uh, we just need to follow that path, so those are my thoughts, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, uh, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just want to um, say again to the teachers out there, we, we know what this sacrifice looks like and to our bus drivers and our support staff. As a parent of a child who'll be going into a brick and mortar school, I under, you know, I understand from the parent's point of view and I think giving information and being transparent on what's happening, you know, it's all about supporting our staff, our staff needs to know what to expect when they come in the classroom and what to expect from us. Um, and I think that we are developing that as far as getting it out to them. Um, I, I appreciate the superintendent and the chair deciding to meet again before August 24th, I think it's so very important. Um, looking at plans, reviewing plans, asking questions about those plans, that's kind of our job and we do it so our staff feels comfortable, it's all about support because none of us are going to be in a classroom, um, you know, the whole day, five days a week with children and we're asking people to do that who are legitimately afraid. Um, some of us have close friends that have died from COVID-19 or very sick from COVID-19, this is not to be something um taken lightly and our preparation for it should be that serious. So I appreciate the conversation today because I think it, it did help people understand the expectations. So we're going to continue to do that and work for the staff because that's what we're here to do, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and I just have a quick few things. Um, first of all, I would like to announce that um superintendent reached out to uh Dr. Jackson and she would be available, if we are available, to have a work session for discussion regarding continuation of COVID-19 as well as reopening of schools for Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, uh, beginning at 10:00 AM. I was going to say 10 to 12, but you know how that goes when we start getting on a roll. So if you want to pencil in um, August 11th from 10 to 12 as it stands now. And the reason for the timing is to accommodate Superintendent Byrd and Dr. Jackson for both of them to be available, uh, because they have afternoon commitments that day. Um, additionally, I will uh, want to thank the board for uh voting today to hire the Florida School Boards Association as our search firm and um Susan and I will work together to prepare a letter, um, letting them, I, I will actually call uh Ms. Messina personally to let her know that we've decided to um hire them for our consultant search and then we will prepare a letter accordingly to the other firms, thanking them for their time and presentation and letting them know our decision. Um, based on that, I'm not sure if we'll be able to have Ms. Messina join us on the 11th because I know it's already a time and a date that we're committing to, if I can get her to zoom in with us that day, we may extend the work session a bit and start to maybe get an overview from her how to proceed, starting with leadership traits and those kind of things. So just kind of keep the 11th, if you will, open um as we begin to formulate that agenda. I too want to thank everybody, um, there's been lots of emails flying around, um, and I thank you for caring enough to write to us, uh, continue to do that, um, and also continue to keep us in your thoughts and prayers. Once again, this is not something that any of us have been through and there's no instruction manual, everybody's learning as we go and I just want to thank our staff, um, Ms. Porteous, uh, Mr. Hill, Superintendent Byrd, um, all the folks that spoke to us today, um, Michelle Townley, um, and many others that are working diligently behind the scenes to get ready for our reopening of schools. Um, we're going to keep learning as time goes on, we have to be vigilant and continue to watch numbers and make the best decision that we can with the information we have. So um, just be patient with us as we go through these uncharted waters um in the next few weeks. Now, we, um, the next item on our agenda would be public comments. We have a plethora of them. Um, so I, I'm thinking about taking a quick recess for about 10 minutes to establish how we're going to handle um close to 300 public comments that have come in, a lot to do with issues we've already talked about today and decided. So if I could, I'd like to go ahead, please don't discontinue, let's take like a 10-minute recess and come back and then we'll address our public comments. Thank you, if you'll just uh close your screen, but do not disconnect. Welcome back to our school board meeting for July 28th, 2020. Uh, we took a short recess and, um, the next item on our agenda is public comments addressing items that are or were not on the agenda tonight. And, um, I wanted to let everybody know that, uh, we are going to begin reading, uh, the emails that we have received. Um, due to time, our policy does allow for up to 30 minutes of public comments. So we will read comments for at least that length of time and then any remaining emails that we have received would be attached to the minutes for the record. So just wanted to let everybody know that, um, upfront. Mrs. Warbington, would you go ahead and please begin with any comments that you've received to read into our public record this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Our first comment comes from Micah Altador. Please keep our children safe through continued distance learning. There is no cure for COVID-19, so why put kids and their families at risk? Vote no to reopen schools. Our next email is from Candy Porter. It's a, it's on behalf of a friend. And it starts with a essay. My child. Good morning. Thanks for calling Polk County Elementary Schools. How can I help you? I heard that you now have an option for online learning for school this fall. Is that right? Oh, yes, ma'am, we do. You may choose either in, in-person attendance for your child or online classes. Do you have a device for your child to use for online classes? And you do know that classes have been delayed for two weeks, right? I know that, but I'm not sure that will make any difference. My child has asthma and about two hours of wearing a mask, she has a really hard time breathing and starts to hyperventilate. She does have a laptop and a tablet, so I think she'll be fine. Oh, good. Gosh, I'm so sorry about the asthma. That must be difficult for her. I'm glad we are able to offer you a program that works. So let me get the paperwork started for her. What is your daughter's name? Janie Doe. Silence. Excuse me? What did you say your daughter's name is? Janie Doe. Um, the only Janie Doe I show in our records is a sixth grade math teacher. That's right. That's my daughter. This did not really happen and Janie Doe is obviously a fictitious name because my daughter will not allow me to call the school for fear of losing her job. But the facts are true. The school board does make allowances for students to learn online, but since this will only be Janie's second year teaching in the school system, she does not have enough seniority to qualify to teach online. Those available positions were taken by teachers with more years of service. I heard a teacher say in a news broadcast that she had been in the military for eight years in combat positions. She came home alive. She said she did not sign up to teach school, only to be killed in the line of duty. I saw another teacher carrying a sign in a protest march in front of the building where a school board meeting was being held. The sign read, "I can't teach from a coffin." I know that children need school for learning about the world and how to survive, for building friendships and learning the importance of camaraderie, for practicing the social skills that will be with them for a lifetime, and for the much more important side benefit of going to school, which is being fed at least one meal a day and maybe two. I know there are food insecurities and that hunger distracts from learning. I know some people cannot work from home and need children in school so they can go to work. I know children left to their own devices follow the stronger children around them and many wind up afoul of the law. I know that the inequities which exist in income, housing and education will not be fixed with the current policies in place or been, or by denying education to our children. I know that school is a dangerous place and there can be no social distancing. One of the ways they are going to try to do this is with separate desks or tables for each student. Have you ever seen an elementary student sit in one place and not get up and move? The second way the school board attempts to work around the social distancing aspect... Our next comment is from Naomi Rios. I am concerned about pre-K programs, especially including ESE pre-K, which include three-year-olds. Many of these students are one and a half standard deviations below cogni- below cognitively. These children have difficulty with social skills, place many things in their mouths, washing hands properly, covering their face and mouth when needed, and need pull-ups changed. I had taught using distance learning for two months last school year with ESE pre-K and had good responses. I had made packets and kept in touch daily through the internet. The parents were very appreciative, appeared grateful for my help and the packet. The general community has to follow six feet apart and wear masks, but the ESE pre-K students are unable to follow these recommendations. Please address these concerns and consider allowing ESE pre-K teachers to teach the same way we taught last year in March to May. Thank you for all you do. I understand this is difficult times. Our next comment comes from Katrina Hutchins. Polk County School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to take a few minutes to speak to you. My name is Katrina Hutchins and I am entering my 22nd year of working for the school board. I have never even thought of addressing the school board or writing to you. However, after watching last month's school board meeting with Mr. Gowfields and the bishop and their individual speeches, I just felt I, that I needed to say something. I realized that the world for all of us has been turned upside down between COVID and riots. It looks nothing like the world we were in at the start of 2019, 2020 school year. I feel that this is causing the entire world to be extremely reactive and forgetting to take time to be self-reflective before we speak. The bishop spoke completely to this at your last meeting and I respect him for this. Our purpose in going to work each day is to raise up a next generation. We are to educate them academically, teach them social skills and critical thinking and have them ready to enter the workforce. I have three children who have gone through Polk County schools. Two will be at the University of Florida in the fall and I have a junior left at Harrison School of the Arts. I am so grateful for administrators and teachers at their schools who realize this and poured into my children daily with relationships, wisdom, instruction and inspiration as they came alongside me to help my children succeed. One thing that I believe these administrators and teachers have that the school board appears to, to need to be reminded of is that it is about kids, about impact, about lives. I get that there are opinions, there are budgets, there are laws, there are mandates and so much more, but I feel it would be helpful for the school board members to spend an entire week at a school. This would allow us to remember that at the end of the day, it boils down to the kids and what can we do to be sure they are successful. I know that my own children, who are emerging adults, watch mentors and those in authority to watch them handle diff- difficult, to watch them handle conflict, voice opinions and compromise. And I have to admit that the example we are seeing from the school board is not one that I would tell them to model themselves after. What good is it doing, anyone, to argue the little and voice opinions unless we are able to all give in some way and work as a team to come up with a solution together? I love people who are able to speak up, rock the boat, stick to their convictions and challenge Our next comment comes from Ricky Fallon. Numbers are skyrocketing every day. Schools should stay closed until COVID numbers decline considerably or vaccine gets readily accessible. Teachers' lives matter too. Our next comment is from Brenda Mathewson. Dear sir, I'm a 31-year veteran Polk County teacher who is 100% ready to return to the classroom in person. Please understand that I am not alone in my belief. Brenda Mathewson, proud Polk County teacher. Our next comment is from David Thorpe. Today I watched the ongoing debate with Hillsborough County Public Schools in reopening schools. I felt that one board member said it best, I was summarizing her key points. It is better to start with e-learning for the first nine weeks and revisit the numbers of coronavirus cases at that time. It would be easier for all involved participants to transition from e-learning to brick and mortar than it would be from brick and mortar to e-learning. If you think you have a logistical nightmare now, imagine what it would be like starting and stopping schools based on outbreaks of COVID cases. I felt this school board member had a total grasp on the reality of the situation and would strongly urge you to follow her lead. Another board member spoke up and asked the superintendent, can you guarantee that not one individual would be harmed by going to school? Of course, he couldn't. I would ask the same of the superintendent and each board member here. If not, then I would again recommend e-learning for the start of the year. I reiterate my previous questions at a previous school board meeting. If you or a family member are not capable or willing to go into classrooms twice a week with teachers, then why should you feel comfortable sending staff back? I get that we all want normalcy, I do. I want to get back to the kids, my classroom, those days of students walking halls. Suffice it to say, we are in a new world, different times, and things aren't normal at this point. The cases are not going down, deaths are not declining, the positivity rate is not below 10%. Even President Trump's son's school, St. Andrews, is not reopening. Donald is not coming to visit the Sunshine State because of Florida being a hotspot. Politics need to be set aside. There is no monetary value for even one single human life, let alone the help costs associated with hospitalization and possible litigation. Will there be some learning gaps? Probably. Can we make those up? We are teachers and always rise to the occasion. We cannot get any clear consensus from all government officials because of the politics being played instead of allowing science to dictate what should or should not happen. If Broward County can do it, Polk County can. We are a hotspot just like them. I strongly urge you to add an emergency agenda item to Tuesday's board meeting that would enable you to vote on moving Polk to full-distance learning now. We need a decision now, not later. The unknown is not healthy in this case. We can no longer put people's lives on hold, we need a clear plan of action. Thank you, David Thorpe. Our next comment comes from Arika Owens. Hi, I was wondering why the board members have not discussed opening a school with students doing alternative, alternating days. Half the class on Monday and Wednesday and the other half on Tuesday and Thursday, and then the groups alternate every other Friday. I feel having half the class in person would allow teachers to socially distance better. I signed up for the distance learning, but if I knew I could have a smaller amount of kids each day so I could adequately, adequately distance them in my room, I would feel much more comfortable doing in-person teaching. Please bring this idea to the board, thank you. Our next comment is from Mrs. Ray. I feel the schools are not fully prepared to open. Please add an emergency agenda item to Tuesday's board meeting that would enable the school board to vote on moving Polk to full-distance learning options at least through the first quarter. Stay safe. Our next comment is from Jennifer Toscano. I'm a kindergarten teacher for a school in Lakeland. I can't imagine how I'm going to teach 20 students while wearing a mask and staying socially distanced. I also can't imagine teaching kindergarten only online. I am suggesting that if we go back in person on August 24th, we have AM and PM sessions. Students will get intensive core instruction face-to-face for half the day and work with online platforms to supplement at home. This will keep class size around 10 for each session. Our next comment is from Joellen Gibson. First, I want to thank you for the hard work you all have been doing during this pandemic. This is all new to us and it cannot be easy to make decisions when things change day-to-day. I do believe we need to open the schools, but it needs to be done safely. The numbers are off the wall and getting worse. I do not have children, they are grown, but I do drive a school bus for Polk County and the thought of having a busload of students scares me. I worry about myself, but also the precious load I carry. I fully understand there are children who need the one-on-one learning, our ESE students, students with learning disabilities, students who needed summer school for reading, et cetera. I believe the rest of the student body should be e-learning. I also believe that elementary students need one-on-one learning with a more structured environment. I believe the middle and high school students can go with e-learning for this first semester. According to what I have read, there will still be sports and band and other after-school activities where the students can socialize. I guess in short, I am begging to not let all these students return at one time. Please let the numbers come down and stay down. Please give our custodians more time to safely clean our schools. Please do not put our precious children in harm's way. Please do not put them in the middle of danger while keeping our fingers crossed they stay safe. I know this is long and for that I apologize. Thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion. Thank you for listening. I pray you will make the right decision for all concerned. God bless you all. Our next comment comes from Betsy Godwin. Good morning. After receiving another call this morning and having no students in school, simply a 28-year veteran teacher and counselor, I am curious if there was information regarding intent for return of students and choice of options to be selected sent via US mail. If not, it is unfortunate, as I have found this to be the best way to communicate with all students in all socioeconomic classes. They should have other options rather than a technology option. Also flyers and signs in churches, convenience stores, on gas pumps, Walmart, Publix, utility departments, daycare centers, banks, physicians' offices, public announcements on the news channels and radio broadcasts, posting yard signs around the county, parking buses around the county with sign notifications, notification on citrus connection buses. Certainly the community would work together to accomplish this for our children. Is it fair to simply default a student to brick and mortar due to lack of access to information? How about sign waivers on street corners, walking neighborhoods, and leaving flyers? Just some thoughts from ideas from 28 years working in Title I schools and mandated parent contact. Kind regards. Our next comment is from Teresa Potter. To whom it may concern, I am a member of the public school system and as much as I miss my students and would love to return to face-to-face teaching, it is absolutely not safe at this time. There is no plan in place by Florida or any of its school districts to ensure the safety and well-being of students, teachers, and all education-related employees. Without a vision or plan, the people perish. Opening schools is far more than just impacting students and staff in attendance. There are family members at home that can be impacted by the uncertain, unclear effects of COVID-19 on humanity. In my case, I have a family member at home in the high-risk category. If I were to be in a brick and mortar class, I could potentially put that family member at risk. I will not do it. How about proposing we stay alive and work at teaching rather than failing to teach because it is difficult to keep teachers and students alive so that they can give and receive teaching? We are not ready to return to a building, there are too many uncertainties. Sincerely. Our next comment comes from Amanda Campbell. To whom it may concern, I'm a public school teacher in an ESE separate class unit. I was wondering as teachers if we would be able to wear face shields instead of masks. I'm asking this because people have a hard time understanding my speech in a mask. Thank you. Our next comment is from Teresa Mosley. Today, please make the decision to open 100% virtual for at least the first quarter. As a teacher, it allows me the time to prepare quality material. As a parent, it gives me peace of mind. Thank you. Our next comment comes from Valerie Clark. A few weeks ago, if I had written a letter, I would have asked for school openings to be postponed two or three more weeks in order to provide adequate safety measures before students go back to in-person learning. I would have asked teachers to be given extra workdays before school starts to train us how to effectively manage new procedures. But that was a few weeks ago. Now, after seeing higher and higher numbers of COVID-19 cases in Florida and seeing that more people under 20 are getting the virus, I believe our best course of action is to continue distance learning for at least quarter one. It saddens me that this is our best option. My oldest daughter will be starting at a different high school this coming year. She is very excited about the availability of classes there opposed to her last school. The best way for her to truly experience those opportunities is in person. She's also a golf player and eager to play golf for her new school. My youngest will be in eighth grade at a school of the arts. She misses her friends. She's been taking fabrication, lab, and dance. In-person is also the best way to learn those classes. But as a teacher and a parent, I feel that right now the safest action for both my children and my future and past students is to do distance learning. It's a tough thing to say, it's not what I want to be the case, but it's what is best for our county right now. However, I would like to see an option for teachers to have access to a classroom for virtual meetings with students at least. I usually teach science, but in fourth quarter I filled in for ag. With both those classes being able to have school equipment and supplies on hand would be better than teaching from home. Other counties, both in Florida and other states, had devoted on, have voted on a plan to do distance learning. I urge you to do the same. While it's not ideal, we need to think of the safety of staff and students. Thank you for allowing my opinion to be heard. Our next comment comes from Carmella Myers. Good evening, I was hoping that the calendar would remove early release days in data days so we could get out in May instead of June. This would be very nice for everyone, blessings. Our next comment is from Cassie Gibson. Hello, thank you for taking the time to read this, I'll be brief. Please put a vote on the agenda for the next board meeting to not reopen schools to brick and mortar and to go e-learning for nine weeks. We need to get this virus under control. We need to assuage the fears and anxiety of parents, teachers, students, and staff. This should be a no-brainer for all of us. Please do the right thing for all by not opening to brick and mortar at this time. Thank you. Our next comment is from Carolyn Porter. As a teacher in Polk County, I wanted to take a moment to express my opinion regarding opening schools. I feel that it is important that students are being taught in a brick and mortar setting in which teachers can fully engage the students in learning. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, I realize the choice is not an easy one. Carolyn Porter. Our next comment is from Sheila Sacchariotis. Please place a vote to not reopen on Tuesday's board meeting and a plan similar to what Billy Townsend is suggesting be implemented. I truly believe that waiting until the second nine weeks to go back to brick and mortar is the safest. It gives our community the time it needs to recover from the resurgence of COVID-19. Comment from Kristi Nipper. I ask you to please keep Polk families safe now by starting e-school for our schools the first quarter or until our COVID positive numbers are much lower. There are too many unknowns, what-ifs, when feasible, to start face-to-face teaching safely at this time. There are not enough classrooms or teachers to follow guidelines to keep students physically distanced. Masks are to be used as well as distancing, not in place of. Hand sanitizer and cleaning wipes should be in every classroom. When the school board members cannot safely meet in person, it is not safe for students to meet in person at school. Please keep Polk families safe, I appreciate your time. Our next comment is from Eric Newhouse. During the last five months in America, more than 4 million people have been infected by Corona COVID-19 virus. Of those, more than 240,000 are children, more than 143,000 Americans died. In Florida, more than 440,000 people have been infected by Corona COVID-19 virus. More than 5,700 Floridians have died. Over the last two weeks, on average, over 10,000 new cases each day and approximately 150 new deaths each day. Polk County is within the top 10 counties out of 67 Florida counties in virus positivity rate. Yet the school board has decided to reopen brick and mortar schools in less than a month. Elementary school children do not understand social distancing and will have extreme trouble keeping masks on. Think about these facts. There are on average 16 shark attacks in waters off the coast of America with an average of one person dying every two years. Yet we close beaches when sharks are swimming too close to the beaches. Approximately 40,000 people each year that are injured in house fires each year and approximately 475 people die annually. Yet schools have fire protocols in place which need to be practiced throughout the school year. Approximately 1,500 people annually injured in tornadoes each year with approximately 80 people dying. Yet schools have protocols in place which need to be practiced throughout the school year. Approximately 1,700 people annually are injured in thunderstorms with 70 deaths each year. Of those, on average, 51 children are injured and 17 are killed by lightning. Yet schools have protocols for thunderstorms which are practiced throughout the school year. On average, 60 people are injured and 17 people die annually by hurricanes. Yet schools closed in anticipation of the storm. Over the last 10 years, 2,261 people have been injured with 1,320 people killed by active school shooters. Yet there are protocols in place at schools. Students are put into lockdowns. All Florida schools have either an armed police officer or an armed guardian on each campus. All of these have lower injury and death rates than Corona COVID-19 virus. Yet you are considering reopening brick and mortar schools. Statistically, one-third of all school staff members have comorbidities. Please don't use the staff and students of Polk County schools as canaries in coal mines to test your assumptions of how this virus will infect and kill children and staff. Our next comment is from Ella Bishop. Please delay the start of on-campus learning. Under the current conditions of the spread of COVID-19 in Polk County, it is unsafe to start on campus face-to-face school. Have a goal of opening safely so we can stay open. Opening and closing is not beneficial to anyone. My choice would be start with e-learning, put safety equipment and protocols in place, monitor the data, and bring students back into the building slowly. Prioritize returning. In other words, ESE, lower socioeconomic students, maybe one grade level at a time. Set criteria for returning safely. Three weeks of declining spread of the virus in the county. I am a parent of teachers, I am a grandparent of students, I am a former Polk County School Board employee. Let's keep our children and staff safe. Thank you, Ella Bishop. Our next comment is from Shelby Fallon. Fallon, good morning. My name is Shelby Fallon and I am a former Polk County substitute teacher, a daughter of a 27-year Polk County teacher, and an active voter. I'm writing in regards to teachers returning to brick and mortar schools as of August 24th. I understand that COVID-19 forces us all to make difficult decisions. These times are unprecedented and many of us are just wanting to get back to a normal routine. If there will ever be a normal again. However, sending teachers and students back to brick and mortar schools this early on is not only dangerous, but could compromise the future education of students countywide. After speaking with other teachers and many of my friends who work in Polk schools, I do understand that they were given the option to participate in distance learning online. But if they choose to, it would lock the teachers in for e-learning the entire year when many would like to return the classroom later on in the year to interact with their students if the infection rate and number of cases are lower. Per these circumstances, I advocate for and strongly suggest moving to distance learning at least through the first quarter of the school year. This would allow teachers and students alike to stay safe and continue learning as they did at the end of the last school year. Not only would this allow more time to disinfect schools and create a game plan once the curve flattens, but it would ensure that schools are not but it would ensure that schools are not being open and closed due to high populations of student infections. I know this is a hard decision, but many of us who are loved ones of teachers and teachers ourselves implore you to please move to distance learning for the first quarter of the school year. How high must the price be to keep brick-and-mortar schools closed if the lives of teachers and students aren't enough? Thank you for your time and consideration. Our next comment comes from Heather Robatalli. Dear Polk County Schools Leadership and School Board, my thoughts and prayers are with you as you make the life and death decisions for the 2020-2021 school year. Please, for the health and safety of all, please start the school year fully online for the first nine weeks, then reevaluate the situation during that time. Then, five weeks into that, look at how the numbers are going. And then you have one month to, if COVID-19 numbers are on the rise, continue online for all. If COVID-19 numbers are where the CDC recommends schools open safely, open for the second nine weeks. You then have a month to prepare the schools, purchase all the PPE. You would have teachers then in direct virtual contact with all students and parents. So surveys and such would be easier to get a response from all families. Yes, this is not the ideal situation for working parents, but if any of the working parents have a sick child or worse, they will be missing work anyway to care for their child. Most teachers have had students who have lost parents, grandparents, and other family members dying during the school year. It is so sad to see that child grieve. The same thing goes for teachers when they lose a family member. It is a tough time. Also, say a loved one is hospitalized with the virus. The unknowns of that for a child are real. When I was in fourth grade, my brother was in a car accident that made him on a ventilator and paralyzed and in a hospital for four months. Then I lived in a rural part of upper Michigan, and the nearest hospital equipped for his injuries was four hours away. I do not remember much about school that year. I remember trips to see him in the hospital and many days worrying if he was going to live or die. Did I care about my performance in school that year? Probably not. I was a good student, but my mind was on whether we were driving to visit him on the weekends, waiting to get home for any news on him, et cetera. I do not want students to have to go through that with any of their family members. We can't prevent all casualties from impacting our students and staff, but we can prevent exposure to a deadly virus by simply keeping the first nine weeks online only.
Thank you, Mrs. Worthington. What I would like to do now is to respectfully request that the remainder of the emails be uploaded into our minutes so that they are part of our public record of our meeting this evening. Thank you so much. Okay, board members, the next order of business this evening is adjournment. There being no further business, this meeting of the Polk County School Board is now adjourned.